We're going to call to order a regular session meeting of the East Hampton School Committee. We're going to roll call and Ben?
Ben Arce here.
Eric?
Eric Gaya here.
Megan Harvey here.
Laura Scott present. Sam?
Sam Hunter here.
Linda?
Led Demarkey here.
Mayor?
Yeah, Laschelle here.
Thank you. Just admitting folks. Can you fit ding-dongs? Do you mind letting folks in?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much. Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to have a little bit of regular business to take care of, which is why we're starting tonight at 5:30. We anticipate that by 6 o'clock, we're going to be moving into the main focus for tonight's meeting, which would be the discussion of our three finalist candidates for the superintendent position. And depending on how that discussion goes, a potential vote this evening. So just to give people a bit of the lay of the land, we are going to run through many of the items on our agenda, and then around 6 o'clock, we're going to start with statements from three folks who attended the site visits to the candidates' three home districts. We will also have public speak, and I'll give you more guidelines for that as we get closer to 6 o'clock. We also have received a few letters from the public that we will also add to public comment. We'll read those in as well. And around 6:45, we anticipate moving into the school committee discussion of the candidates. So with that in mind, do we have any correspondence, Megan, aside from comments about the superintendents?
Nope.
Okay, great. Public comment is listed next, but as I said, we're going to scooch that a bit in the schedule to accommodate our guests starting around 6 o'clock. So the next item, we had originally intended to discuss the school bus electrification rebate update, but it's my understanding that we've had some new information unfold in the past week, and we have decided to table that for now because it's an additional cost to the district. So we are going to look at that again in the coming year, as far as some other revenue streams, correct? So we're moving on to the business update from Nick Burnier. Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, everyone. I promised to be brief. I know that my report is certainly not the centerpiece of tonight's meeting. I'll start with our FY '25 local appropriation report. At this time, 44.4% of the local appropriation has either been spent or is encumbered. It's important to note that some expenses currently in the general fund will be reclassified to other funding sources toward the end of the year. I'm, as always, continuing to monitor the FY '25 budget for areas to watch. The areas of most concern currently are out-of-district special ed tuition, special education transportation, as well as McKinney-Vento transportation. Those areas are definitely overspent at this point. The finance subcommittee and I will be having a meeting in a couple of weeks where we'll go more in-depth with this, but for now, just know that a little under half of the appropriation at this point has been spent or encumbered. The FY '26 budget process is certainly, you know, in full swing at this point. At this time, I've met with all the principals and directors to, you know, talk about and determine their needs for next year. I will have all their budget requests due to me by January 3rd, and, you know, I use that information, as well as things that I do on my own and things that take place up here, to build the first draft of the FY '26 proposed operating budget. I'm currently in the process of calculating district-wide costs, which at this point are pretty much done, while principals and directors prepare their budget requests. So that's pretty much where we are for next year's budget process. And then if anybody or nobody has any questions, I'll move on to the November personnel report. All right, not much action in November here. We had one new hire, a technology technician that had been vacant for quite some time. I believe this may be the first time our IT department has been fully staffed since I've been here, so that's good. And I know that's certainly going to, you know, just help them and just take a lot of weight off of their backs because they've been understaffed for a long time. We had two separations as well. We had one substitute teacher separate from the district, as well as one substitute lunch supervisor, which brings us to current vacancies. There's a special education teacher at Mountain View that's vacant, although I do believe there's somebody in mind for that, so that should be filled very soon. Same thing with the reading interventionist position, that, you know, will be filled very shortly as well, which brings us to still a lunch supervisor vacancy at Mountain View, which I've asked to be advertised in several different areas, such as School Spring Indeed, as well as our district website and our social media outlets. So we're trying to get the word out there to fill that. Does anybody have any questions?
It appears not. Thank you so much. I love your tie. All right, that is it for our business update. We're going to move to schools, school committee discussion. Do we have a policy subcommittee update?
A brief one. We did meet a couple of weeks ago. We're working on a couple of policies, but I am just waiting to get a little bit more feedback before moving this forward.
Great. Finance?
The finance subcommittee has just agreed on the date to meet on January 7th. The agenda is nearly perfected. Thank you, Nick, for those additions. So we'll get that to Sue and school meets, but no update.
That's a 10:00 AM meeting?
It is.
Great.
10:00 AM, yep.
Great. Do we have a CES update, Sam?
I missed the last meeting because we were doing superintendent interviews.
Ah, well, priorities.
Priorities, but I'll be going to the next one.
Great. Next on our list is superintendent search update. We're just going to put a pin in that for about five minutes, and then we'll get right back to you on that. And the MASC resolutions that we had listed, we, as Sam has alluded to, we have been very busy in the past month.
We're working on a couple of things right now.
We have been working on some things. So we have decided to set aside the update on the MASC resolutions. I think we want to take some time just to kind of discuss what was proposed at the convention that was just held in November, have an opportunity for members to talk about potential implications here, and how to set priorities for next year. So we are going to set that for our January or February school committee meeting. So that takes us to action items.
All right. Motion to approve the school payroll dated 11/27/2024 in the amount of $642,017.79.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/27/2024 in the amount of $232,915.17.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 11/19/2024 in the amount of $850.62.
May I second?
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 11/14/2024 in the amount of $630,143.63.
Second?
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 11/14/2024 in the amount of $773,483.3.
Can I get a second?
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 10/31/2024 in the amount of $626,785.29.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries?
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/31/2024 in the amount of $308,354.53.
Second?
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Thank you, Eric. Motion carries? We're going to scooch up the approval of the 2025 school committee meeting schedule. All of you should have a copy of that in front of you. If there are any questions, we certainly can make revisions later, but we do need to get something on the books, so we have January and February locked in.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure, sure, sure.
How is it decided which meetings, which months will have two meetings and which will have one?
Sue Colby's enormous brain and institutional experience.
Perfect. Just wanted to...
As it aligns with, like, business.
Makes sense.
Yes. Kudos to Sue's brain. All right, can I get a motion?
Sorry.
You go. You do this one.
I'm going to, "Motion to approve the school committee meeting calendar for 2025."
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second?
Thank you, Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes. Thank you, Sue, for that. Okay. Perfect. So we are now sitting at 5:45 PM. All right. So we are going to take a brief five-minute recess. Most of the public is under the impression that the superintendent portion of this meeting will begin at 6:00. We weren't entirely sure how long it would take us to get through our regular business. Everybody was a great team player. We moved through it very efficiently. So we are going to take five minutes just to allow the public time to tune in, and I don't want them to miss anything. We will reconvene in five minutes. We'll just stand in the back so that it's not super weird for everybody who's sitting here in the room.
Great.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are going to reconvene, pick up where we left off. It is now promptly 5:58, so everyone was expecting a 6:00 PM start time, so we're right on schedule. I'll keep this brief, just going to share with the public kind of what has happened and what has gone into the process thus far that has brought us to tonight and what we expect to happen tonight. We began this process in earnest in spring and summer. We contracted the assistance of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They sent us a professional consultant, our field director, Liz LaFond, who has been invaluable in her guidance and professional understanding of how best to handle situations like this. Liz, we can share with the public how many applications we've received?
Do you remember?
I do. Yes. Okay. So we, the district, received a total of 10 applicants. And the way we chose to roll out the process in this district for this position was to request nominees and applicants for a search committee. We then reviewed those, and we compiled a search committee. So there was a parent representative from every grade level, the elementary, middle, and high school. Similarly, a staff representative from each of those grade levels, and some representation from our central office. Dr. Lively, our special ed director. So we want to first thank that work and that of their student representative. I apologize, the ding-dong is very distracting. And the student representative, Walter Baker, who's here with us tonight, they, it was a very, very intense two weeks where they met nearly every day. They reviewed all of those applications. They interviewed candidates. They had long discussions, and they chose to send forward three finalists. So those are the three whom we have been working closely with over the past few weeks. We began with site visits, where representatives from East Hampton visited each of these candidates in the districts they're currently employed in. That took place the week before last. Last week, we hosted each of the three candidates here in district, where they visited throughout the day. They were accompanied all day long by our interim superintendent, Maureen Benenda, who took them to all the school buildings from pre-k through high school. They met with students, staff. They came to central office and met with that administration team. Then in the evening, they met for a 90-minute interview with the school committee. Some of you may have seen the video or attended those in person. And after that, they had a 45-minute meet and greet with the public in the high school. So each of these candidates, needless to say, has put forward a really admirable effort and put their best foot forward every step of the way. We were so appreciative and impressed, A, for their desire to work in the district, and B, for just the constant professionalism. I feel like I, as a former educator and a school committee member, learned so much about what they are doing in their districts, their pedagogy, their perspectives on public education. At the end of the day, you know, we are all working collaboratively to preserve and improve public education, and each of those three women would be outstanding partners in that work. So that brings us to tonight. The public has had every chance to get to know these three candidates. We have looked at their resumes. We have met with their districts. We have called their references. We have spoken to them personally. Now, tonight, the public will get a chance to share their thoughts. As I mentioned before, we're going to begin tonight with three brief statements. I attended all three site visits, but I had a different companion at each of the three. We are going to go try to keep a consistent order so the public can follow along with the three candidates we're discussing. So the order will begin with Dr. Cynthia Kennedy, who is currently working in Athol Royalston Regional School District. We'll then be discussing Mary Jane Rixon, who is currently working in Granby Public Schools. And we'll conclude the conversation by talking about Dr. Michelle Bolsh, who is currently at Springfield Public Schools. So those three site visits will begin the discussion, we'll then move into public speak, and then the committee themselves will have an opportunity to discuss each of the three candidates, and we'll see where we stand. And so let's begin. So our first of the three site visit synopsis is going to be delivered by the search committee chairperson, Hannah Sullivan, who's a parent of one middle schooler and one high schooler, and who attended the Athol site visit with me. So thank you so much, Hannah. I appreciate you speaking tonight.
Absolutely. So on December 5th, Laura Scott and I had the pleasure of remotely meeting with different staff members of the Athol Royalston Regional School District. The school had a snow day, so that's why we met with them remotely. We had separate meetings with the Athol high school staff, instructional coaching staff, elementary administrators, Athol Teacher Association leadership, and the executive team. The groups have positive insights to share about Dr. Kennedy and her leadership style, and also expressed a lot of remorse at losing her, which speaks to her ability to lead her community.
Yes, that's a common, we were called thieves quite often during our week of site visits. Fair, fair. So next, our next visit was Mary Jane Rixon in Granby, and Sam Hunter accompanied me to that site.
Yeah, and I have to say, like, it was a really interesting visit. Granby is a similar district to ours in that it's very small, and there's only two schools. And everybody really, like, knows each other very well there. You can tell there's a really strong sense of community, and I was just really impressed by how every single person that we spoke to really had a lot of respect for Ms. Rixon. Her tenure there has been really brief. She's only been there interim for this school year, and everybody kind of spoke to appreciating what she's brought to the district so far and kind of wishing that they were going to have her longer. I was really impressed also just by how connected she was to the students. And I know it can be, you know, one of the, one of the things I was thinking about recently is, like, we've, we've had an interim superintendent for a year and a half now, and for a lot of our students, like, this is who they're going to remember as their superintendent. So what feels like a small amount of time to us is much longer for our students, and I was really...
Good point.
Thank you. I was just really impressed by how, like, she knew the students at the school. As we were walking around the school, she was talking with them, knew them by name. The student representative on the school committee shouted "Hire her" at us as we walked into the building, which was great. So it was just great to see kind of everybody, how connected they were and how connected she was to their community. And also, the administration really seemed to appreciate the way that she leads the district as well. So it was just a lovely visit, really great experience, and I was very glad to get to do it.
Great. Thank you, Sam. The final, Sue Wellson, the assistant principal at the high school, joined me for the site visit to Springfield Public Schools. Thank you so much, Sue.
Thank you. And mine's just a little bit longer, so I apologize. It's the teacher in me, I guess. So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the visit to Springfield Public Schools to meet and with people in support of Dr. Bolsh. As part of the superintendent search committee, I was happy to attend and represent the other search committee members along with chairperson Scott. There were 19 people that we met with over the course of almost three hours. That was divided into three panels. The first was school administrators and school administrator supervisors. The second panel was supervisors, coworkers, and chiefs. And the third panel was academic team or direct reports. Of note, there were at least three people who came back to the district that were no longer employed by there to speak with us, including a current superintendent in a neighboring district. They had all stories to share of working with and for Dr. Bolsh and the results that were transformative. There were many things of note that Dr. Bolsh, that they spoke of concerning Dr. Bolsh in the, in the three hours. However, a couple of stood out, a couple of them stood out, excuse me. First, her commitment to hearing all voices. There were many examples shared about her going to where parents, caregivers, and students meet in the community and listening to concerns, to positive interactions, to frustrations, and to creative ideas. The point was to connect and listen, not to come in with an agenda or decision already made or thinking she has the answer at the start. She values the, encourages the perspective of all and then takes that with her team to develop recommendations and plans. Then she goes back to the community to gather feedback. People spoke about the efforts she makes to hear all voices through a variety of means and the personal work that she has done on equity and inclusion, then developing ways to improve practices and understanding for all staff. Her efforts to working together to make things better for students and the community is paramount. Second, her professional development expertise. Dr. Bolsh is committed to improving to her, her personal understanding of educational practices, curriculum evaluation, and then coaching best practices. She developed and led professional development for administrators, leaders, and educators. This resulted in better understanding and consistency across schools, especially for the evaluation systems, and improvement in the work with students. They talked about her finding joy in coaching people and helping them reach new heights in their work with students. Her personal commitment to growth is evident, and her desire to help colleagues to move to the next level is clear. Third, her joy of working with students. Working as a special education teacher, the people on the panel spoke about her desire to connect with each student and then in leadership roles to pave the path for all students to feel confident and to grow. And lastly, the fit for East Hampton. People spoke about her positive comments about her deep dive into East Hampton and what East Hampton is all about. Then, after the search committee interview, her joy and expressions and feelings about East Hampton, and that was the perfect, or that was a great fit. Thank you to the East Hampton School Committee for providing a thorough and thoughtful process. Your commitment to finding the right superintendent after having an excellent superintendent as an interim superintendent is clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellson. Okay, we would love to open public speak at this time. We're going to begin with those who have joined us in person, and also you can signal if you're joining us remotely and would like to share your thoughts. Please raise your little remote hand, and we will get to everybody. I don't know.
Your regular-sized remote hand.
I have your regular-sized remote hand.
Thousand years old.
Aye.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the East Hampton Public School District. My name is Dreah Marks. I am a technology educator and a parent of a Mountain View school sixth grader, and I had the honor to sit on the superintendent search committee. Tonight, I speak for myself when I say that Dr. Bolsh blows the other candidates out of the water, and they were each commendable in their own right. Dr. Bolsh is the real deal. East Hampton Public School District would be lucky to have Dr. Bolsh as superintendent. Based on her interviews and speaking with her at the meet and greet, it is clear to me that Dr. Bolsh is authentic, passionate, transparent, principled, incredibly thoughtful, highly skilled, with proven success in a district that dwarfs ours through meaningful collaboration and courageous conflict resolution. She has a nuanced understanding of data. Yes, we are more than data and technology and education. She had me at CS for All and SAMR Model. As a parent, I'd like to go out on a limb and speak for the larger parent body and say, "We want our children to be seen, known, and valued." And as parents, we seek to be engaged partners with school administration. Dr. Bolsh is not afraid of parent engagement or AI. Yes, our children are amazing, and we want that phone call from the school because our student did something to be proud of. Dr. Bolsh's Y centers our children, which has a domino effect. It improves our school culture, which in turn benefits our school community and the greater East Hampton community. In summation, Dr. Bolsh is a transformative candidate, and it is my hope that school committee members see this and make a transformative decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dreah, for your efforts on the search committee. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Go right ahead. Master Baker.
What did you just call me?
Masters and mister, Walter Baker.
Oh, okay.
Also of the search committee.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Walter Baker. I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School, and I had the honor of being selected to serve on the superintendent preliminary search committee as the student representative, along with some of East Hampton's most passionate educators, parents, and administrators. It was a privilege to be a part of this important step in finding the right leader for our district, and I can assure everyone that our work was thorough and driven with the sole purpose of finding the leader who will best serve the needs of our district, community, and the students. While I cannot share specifics of discussions with the candidates due to the confidentiality of this process, I am here today to share my very strong support for Dr. Michelle Bolsh. After thoroughly reviewing the qualifications and experience of many exceptional candidates, I can say with complete unwavering confidence that Dr. Bolsh is the right choice to lead our district. First, Dr. Bolsh brings unparalleled experience and expertise to the table. Her career is marked by measurable achievements in improving student outcomes with programs such as Portia of a Graduate, as well as fostering collaborative innovations by implementing the primary person model, as well as organizing student summits. Dr. Bolsh began her career in Springfield as a teacher and worked her way up to chief instructional officer. Having been in a multitude of different positions in the district, Dr. Bolsh has been able to approach issues from various dynamics within the school system. Second, Dr. Bolsh is deeply committed to upholding the values that our district strives for. She is passionate about educational equity and cultivating a strong sense of belonging for students in the classroom. Dr. Bolsh is a strong advocate for student-centered decision-making and is constantly taking feedback and building trusting relationships with all of the district stakeholders. Third, the search process itself gives me high confidence in this recommendation. The superintendent preliminary search committee worked diligently to evaluate each candidate based on their qualifications, leadership qualities, and alignment with our district's needs and mission. Throughout this process, Dr. Bolsh continuously stood out as someone who not only meets but exceeds these criteria. I wholeheartedly believe that Dr. Bolsh is the right leader for our district. With challenges like navigating budgets and enhancing student outcomes to opportunities such as strengthening community partnerships, Dr. Bolsh has the ability to build on our district's past successes, as well as address areas for growth and continuous improvement. To end my remarks, I'd like to restate that while I cannot share specifics of deliberations, I can assure you that the process was rigorous, thoughtful, and focused on solely what's going to be best and benefit all stakeholders of the district. Dr. Bolsh is a proven leader with the vision, expertise, and commitment that will further make our district a great place to learn and grow. I respectfully urge the school committee to appoint Dr. Michelle Bolsh as our district's next superintendent. Dr. Bolsh's leadership will be transformative to education, and I'm fully confident that she will make a lasting positive impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Walter, and thank you for your service on the search committee as well. Again, a lot of work that went into that. Anyone else in the room tonight that would like to share thoughts? Jennifer? Yeah?
I don't have anything prepared.
Do you have anything to say?
Um, sure.
Excellent.
So I don't know how anyone could follow Walter. So I'm not going to make a...
That's fair.
I just want to say that...
Do you want to pause very quickly to tell the public who you are?
Sure. I'm Jennifer Cameron. Do I need to say?
Also served on our search committee.
I did, yes.
Yes.
And that was such an honor and a pleasure. The three candidates, I think, all would do a fine job. Any of them would do a fine job. And I love that we have three good candidates to choose from. I agree with Walter that I believe that Michelle Balch is a very good fit for our district. And I enjoyed her interview and I just, I... Sorry, I wasn't prepared to...
No, that's... I put Jennifer on the spot, everybody.
But no, I love that she expressed wanting to stay someplace for a long time. And I just, I loved her answer when you asked her, Laura, why East Hampton? I thought that she gave a wonderful answer from coming from Springfield to East Hampton to really know the students. So I also want to support her as a choice for our next superintendent.
Thank you for sharing and thank you again for your service on the search committee. Everybody keep your eye on Jennifer Cameron. I think she is school committee material, everybody. Just saying. Anyone else from the public care to share thoughts tonight? We're going to move... Do we have remote hands? Lots of dinging.
There's one hand.
Oh, Dr.... Oh, I see. Yep, great, yes.
Hi. Thank you for giving us the chance to comment here. I just also wanted to lend my voice heard to support Dr. Balch. I was really impressed with her interview. I particularly was impressed with her response to the question about how she handles conflict. And I think, you know, she had a really constructive approach to that. And when we think about conflict, it's not necessarily just confrontation, but it's all the sorts of challenges and problems that a school district has to face. And so I thought that the way that she approaches that was really constructive. And I also thought that she seemed like she was very open to hearing from all of the stakeholders, parents included, and taking that feedback and incorporating it into her work with the district. So I would encourage the school committee to select her for our superintendent. And I also just want to say thank you to all of the people who served on the search committee. That was a lot of work and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Megan. Anyone else joining us remotely care to share their thoughts? Before we close public speak, we did receive three different letters. So I'm just going to read these quickly into the record. The first was from Alice Barber... Yes, I'm sorry, I printed out too many pages. The first was from Alice Barber. And I assume Bonnie Atkins as well.
They're both in the book.
Yes, thank you. I only printed the first page. Dear East Hampton School Committee, we are writing to you with deep support for Dr. Michelle Balch, a superintendent of East Hampton Public Schools. While we can recognize many strengths in Ms. Mary Jane Rixon and Dr. Cynthia Kennedy, we feel that Dr. Balch's commitment to belonging, her own connection to her child self, and her unwavering and many-year commitment to her current school district, particularly in this time of high educator turnover, are stunning examples of what we as parents of a high school student are wanting in leadership. Dr. Balch's energy and passion for this work was palpable. In fact, we left the interview believing that this work is her vocation. She clearly has the credentials necessary for the wide range of demands at this job, but it was her commentary about her own experience of having been an average student that really drew us in. She knows what it is like to not be seen. This seems to have driven her to see all children and understand the power of responsibility of all adults in our community, to recognize and elevate the inherent gifts children bring to all of us, even and especially if the children cannot see their own worth. She understands that relationship and a sense of belonging above all else are what's important. We were standing with Dr. Balch and several other adults following her interview. As we were talking, a middle school student joined the group and said to her, "ST math is a problem and it is limiting my creativity." We've heard that before. Truly, it was as though the adults in the circle melted away and that student became the only person in the room. Dr. Balch immediately moved through the middle of our circle and engaged in conversation with this child, validating and listening. Her commitment to child voices is clear. This is the kind of leader we want our own child seeing and learning from in her several years remaining at East Hampton High School and for all the other children learning in our community. Thank you for all the work you do and your dedication to the children and teachers of our city. Sincerely, Alice Barber and Bonnie Atkins. So thank you for that letter. Also, Alice should write a book. Beautiful prose. The next letter was from Ben and Leah Ewing. Hi, school committee. We wanted to reach out and voice our support for the candidacy of Michelle Balch for the position of superintendent. We felt that she demonstrated excellent leadership qualities and we were very impressed by her plans for addressing the challenges that our district faces. Thank you all for your work in this demanding and time-intensive process on behalf of the students of East Hampton. Ben and Leah Ewing. I'm going to note that at the bottom of each one of these emails that I have printed out is a note that says, "Please consider the environment before printing this email." And I need to do better. I need to put it on a pad. Okay, the final letter we received is from Amanda Judd, who works in the district. And yes, she gets to this. Okay, dear members of the school committee, I am reaching out in support of superintendent candidate, Dr. Michelle Balch. I have watched all three recorded interviews as well as met Dr. Balch and Mary Jane Rixon in person. I am the parent of three children at MBS as well as a staff member at EHS and I feel Dr. Balch would be the best fit for our school district. I feel Dr. Balch will be interactive with the staff, students, family, and community members, something that we have become used to this past year and a half with interim superintendent Beninda and a quality that has been much appreciated. Dr. Balch describes in her interview values and goals to help us move in a positive direction. In addition, she provides possible solutions to weaknesses and shortcomings I feel currently in the district. I was very impressed and delighted with her professionalism and knowledge during the interview. A couple of points she mentioned in her interview I would like to address further. First, her commitment to making sure all students have a trusted adult in the building. I know that this is something we strive for at EHS and Bill Evans and Sue Wilson work with the staff frequently to help accomplish this. I feel it is so important for all students to feel like they have a staff member that they can seek out for support because not all students have great adult supports outside of the school. To build a positive relationship with a staff member is vitally important for a student's success in school and in life. A second specific point I would like to highlight is Dr. Balch's mention of supporting students with an IEP within the mainstream classes, not always removing students from their class for extra help. As a parent, I have two children with IEPs for reading. Each day, they are removed from their classes for 45 minutes for extra reading support. That is support they very much need, but it also creates a hardship as my children have the fear of missing out from the content they are missing in the mainstream class. I am very interested in Dr. Balch's suggestion of instead of removing students from the class for extra support, to instead bring a special ed teacher into the class. I know my fifth grader would very much prefer having extra support in his class instead of leaving his class every day. These are just some points that stuck out to me while watching her interview. I was very pleased by her entire interview and again, I think she would be the best fit for our district. Thank you for your consideration and your time. So if there's anyone else, we're going to last call for those who are joining us in public or remotely if you would care to share your thoughts. And we're going to give that just like 30 seconds to take down in case someone is stealing themselves at home. Maybe not. Okay, so we are going to conclude public speak. Many thanks to those who came out tonight to join us and those who are joining us remotely. As I'd mentioned before, we're going to move into the school committee discussion portion of the evening. So I decided to structure this to address each of the candidates individually, one at a time. We are going to take them again in that same order, the order that they were interviewed in, which means that we're going to begin with a discussion of Dr. Cynthia Kennedy, who currently hails from the Athol Royalston Regional School District, if members want to grab their requisite notice. So what I would like to do, Ben, is start with you. Any thoughts that you'd like to share about Dr. Kennedy? We will move on down the line and then we'll reverse that order for the next candidate discussion. Go ahead, Ben.
Good. Thank you. Lots to say, lots to take in. It's been a really phenomenal experience to watch these three fantastic candidates come forth and share their expertise with us. As far as Dr. Cynthia Kennedy goes, two things really stood out to me. One was that she has a lifelong commitment to learning. I was really impressed by one of the things she said about wanting to upgrade or enhance her understanding of the budget and how budgets work and applied with Dusty, I think it was, to become a school budget officer. She felt like she had a weakness there and she was determined to improve that. And I think that kind of action speaks loudly of her character and the kind of leader she is. I think the idea that the person in charge is also a student of sorts really does matter and is valuable. I also was really impressed by a continued reference to the arts in schools and that the arts really matter and how we do things and how we build curriculums and how we build communities and really connecting the school to East Hampton and East Hampton's very rich arts community. That was great. I felt like she articulated East Hampton in a way that showcased that we are placed at values-high standards. She talked about the curriculum. She talked about making sure that every student is included. She talked about the importance of having parents in the building, which is something that I've often felt is strangely missing. And I think it's an incredible resource. We have all these fantastic parents. She's talked about how she sees herself as always a teacher, which is a fun contrast to the idea of her always as a student. She's also thinking of things from the perspective of what's it like in a classroom. And that is also an invaluable resource from that position. She mentioned things like having parents and students on hiring committees, which felt radical and fascinating. And I was very curious about that kind of thing. And then there was this idea of the courageous conversation, which is, seems incredibly important and necessary and valuable to the work of being an effective superintendent. You have to be willing to talk to all stakeholders and to face the difficult conversations that come probably every day. And I felt like she was deeply committed to that work. She ended in a way that I thought was powerful and showcased her authenticity and true, a true self, a true human person, you know, not just a professional kind of CEO type. Like she's a human being like us who really does want to be part of the community and wants to really, you know, help us grow. I felt, she said something like she loves the people in her life and you could kind of feel that come from her. So it was great to hear her and I really enjoyed myself listening to what she had to say.
Thank you, Ben. Eric?
So I went through my notes for everybody and kind of summarized, so I don't want to harp on too many repetitions. But definitely grateful for the three candidates that came in. This was my first experience being any part of a superintendent's search and it takes a tremendous amount of courage to step into this role and to sit there at that table and just really have to answer a question after question from top to bottom. And starting with Cynthia, she was incredibly prepared, which was really nice to see. She had a tremendous amount of notes. We had anticipated follow-up questions with each candidate and really there was no room for it because of the thoroughness of making sure she answered every question. To piggyback on what Ben had said, her mentioning that she went back to taking courses on school finances and mentioned she has no interest in becoming a school business manager, but she wanted to have that insight and that tool in her toolkit. And she also mentioned, when we asked about special ed, she mentioned about her work in creating safe spaces in classrooms for students with trauma-induced stress and trying to look at different ways and avenues to keep students in the classroom where they can access the most learning possible. So those were two of my main takeaways from Dr. Kennedy. It was a pleasure to hear her speak on her experiences and what she could bring to our district. And yeah, that's what I have.
Great, thank you, Eric. Megan?
I could go on for a long time talking about Dr. Kennedy. In addition to all of our other candidates, I was wildly impressed by her preparation, both in her application materials and in her interview and in her responses to the questions that we asked her. I'm going to highlight a couple of things that my colleagues have already mentioned that I also indicated as sort of my, things that stood out for me. And one of those was her reference frequently back to her values and how those align with the values of our district and how carefully she had sort of thought about how those values might match up. I really appreciated her conversation and discussion of problems best being solved at the point of origin and how that as a superintendent she can support that in happening but make sure that there's sort of, for lack of a better term, a chain of command that allows for these problems to not keep repeating themselves. And I thought that was really insightful. She also spoke to curriculum review cycles and sort of the consistency and transparency and sort of how that plays into assessment and MCAS scores and sort of all of that kind of decision-making. I really appreciated when she said, "Sometimes there is no right answer and we are all desperate for a right answer and for a superintendent to make that choice, that right answer." And really spoke to the nuances of what happens when there isn't one and the priority is to protect first and foremost and always students and then also faculty and staff in the district. I thought that spoke volumes about her priorities. I also really appreciated, at one point I wrote this quote down in my notes, that a question she asks herself every week is, "How are we going to do better next week?" And I just thought that was, speaks a lot to her dedication to constant improvement and sort of something she said about the budget later, which is that you just don't give up. You don't just say, "Well, that's that." When you reach a challenge, you think about ways to improve or to figure out a problem. She also spoke very highly of the students in our district and the questions that they asked her. And I was pleased to see that she saw our students for who they are, which is amazing students. So I was pleased to see that.
Great. I'm going to take this time to share. We also, I mentioned that when the candidates visit our district, they visited the students. So we have some feedback from those students. They were given little surveys with a rubric where they could, you know, they were assessing the, they were writing down comments and then assessing the three candidates on five different criteria. Understanding the role of the superintendent, ability to relate personally, is aligned with the district's core values, communication skills, and ability to inspire others. Don't get into the road details, but I will say that out of a, out of, on average, Dr. Kennedy scored a 17.75 or like a 17 and three-quarter star search? Anyway, so, and there were a few comments in here that I thought were worth repeating. And these are from East Hampton.
Out of 20? Sorry, did you say that?
Out of 20 points, 17.75 out of 20, which would be a perfect score. Stand-up person, speaks the truth even if you don't want to hear it. Our kids don't mess around either, so I'm sure they appreciated that. Prioritizes working in the service of students. Truly invested in students' lives. Compassionate, empathetic, objective outlook. So I'm going to share that for now and move on to Sam.
Yeah, I, one of the things that I really enjoyed about this interview was the way that she really kind of came alive when we were talking about assessments. Like you could tell, I really like, I really like it when people kind of info dump their favorite subjects at me and you could tell that was exactly what was happening. But it was in such a, a way that was so accessible as well. But it was in such a, a way that was so accessible as well. So as she was listing off all of these assessments, I felt like I could really follow along with what she was saying. And that's, that's a really big deal and not everybody can do that, especially people who are really into data and being able to kind of share that passion with other people who might not come to it in the same organic way is really important in this job. So I thought that was great. I also was just really impressed by how prepared she was and how much time she had evidently put. I mean, we, some of these questions were really hard. We added a lot of clauses and there were like a lot of things to fill out in them. We expected everybody was going to spend the weekend preparing and she clearly had spent the weekend preparing. She had lots of notes. She had a lot of depth to all of her answers and she really like covered every single aspect we were looking for. One thing that really stood out to me as well was when we were, we did ask a follow-up question about AI technology. And she told a really good story about a conference she had gone to where she had seen AI being used to help students write. So they would describe something and it would show a picture of what they just described and they would say, "Well, no, but I wanted the water to be blue." And so then they would say it again, but they would add the word "blue" and then the water would be blue. And I think that is so cool. That's kind of exactly the way I want us to be thinking about technology. Kind of how can we use technology to build on what students are already doing or like kind of bring things out of students that would be hard to, hard for them to access otherwise? So I thought that was really cool. And she also said, I wrote this down exactly, towards the end she said, "We have to do better than we are doing as a nation." And I just thought that was like, just such a, it was the last thing I wrote down. It really has stuck with me and I've really thought about it a lot. And in terms of like, somebody who would be in the position to be a leader at a time like this, I think that she, she was very qualified and I really appreciated hearing from her. And there are some things that she said that have kind of stuck with me, so, thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Linda?
I was, first of all, this is my first time going through this process also and it was a very informative and interesting process to go through. With Dr. Kennedy, I was very struck by the amount of homework that she did, how prepared she was. She clearly, clearly wants this job. And she made that very clear from the moment she sat down, through every single word that she spoke. She had done a lot of work on what East Hampton is as a town, where, what our values are, what we look forward to in a leader and what, how she would best fit into that. And she really had pages of notes that she had gone through that were all wonderfully prepared, you know. Had every question, she had a lot of interesting comments. I also, and her passion to be here. It was very clear that she would like to be a part of East Hampton, be the school community. I, like my other colleagues, were impressed by the fact that she wanted to go back to school, that she wanted to learn about budget processing, that she wanted to fill in where she saw that she had weaknesses as a superintendent, as administrator, and that she really wanted to key into those. I had a follow-up question to her and it was hard to get one because she really took up that time and told us a lot about her. And it was about conflict because I really, you know, was interested in handling conflict. She gave us a very good answer when she discussed that. She discussed again a lot of really great points. Like Sam, I enjoyed Sam's follow-up question because I too am very interested in how we are going to use AI. I believe AI is a value, is going to be a valuable tool. It doesn't have to be a scary tool. It's here. How do we use it? I thought it was some really interesting ways that we could be using that and looking forward. And I agree, we are not in a time now where, we're at a time that we are needing transformation in education. That's, that's the facts. And having somebody with, like Dr. Kennedy, I feel that we would be well-served as a community if she became the superintendent.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, so looking at the resumes, or actually pointing back, first of all, the, I think the quality of the search and also what we've heard from people who were a part of the search committee and parents and whatnot, really goes to this committee's just structure of the search, I thought was just amazing. And getting the step-by-step from Laura when I wasn't here, how it was going to go. And I really do, I'm really grateful of just how this committee, members of the public, really went all hands on deck to really pull together a great group of candidates, but these finalists in particular, I don't envy those who are on the search committee whittling it down. Dr. Kennedy, the first thing that stood out for me with Dr. Kennedy was where she was coming from, Athol Royalston. I've spent a lot of time working in that area. It has some, some real challenges geographically, resources, I mean, finding a primary care doctor up there. And to look at her body of work in that area and really being able to know it, I was, was kind of like a great indicator to me that you've got somebody who's very dedicated and who wants to do the deep dive. The fact that she then came to East Hampton with the research clear from letters in her packet and then what we've heard tonight and what you guys saw that, that was not, her work is not exclusive to a point on the map. But she really understood what East Hampton was looking for, what it needed, what we had for resources, where we had been and where we wanted to go. And I think that was just very remarkable. You know, really a top-notch educator, but clearly an innovative thinker. That's from Kennedy.
Yeah, well said. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap this one up. I, I was very taken with Dr. Kennedy. I think she first, first of all, her accolades are very impressive. She looks great on paper. That is all wonderful. And then as I got to have some personal interactions with her through the site visit and then her interview, she is an incredibly authentic, warm, welcoming person. I found her, you know, she, there was no pretense at all with Dr. Kennedy. She was very honest. She had, she was fearless in that way to say, you know, "This is what has led me to make these decisions in my career. This is what I value in my life and this, and I want to be," you know. She very clearly communicated that she had identified East Hampton as a place where she believes she could serve very well and fit, fit very comfortably. And I don't think she was incorrect in that. She had a clear commitment. She was incredibly well-prepared, which is like mantra for me. This woman had 39 pages of notes that she referenced. She referenced our strategic plan. She referenced our data. She referenced our student populations. I mean, she, I can't imagine how many hours she spent preparing. And it just speaks to her, you know, and this was also clear from many of her colleagues that we spoke with at the site visit, that there is no halfway with Dr. Kennedy. She is all-in, incredibly dedicated, incredibly committed. And just, I can't say enough about just her warmth and honesty. And there were a few things that I just want to highlight for the public too. You know, she, she had talked about, we were talking a lot about tech and how to integrate things and how, how we handle this in 21st century learning. She had said, you know, "Everything, everything should be viewed as a tool to read, write, speak and listen," which made my soul sing. I thought, this is a person who gets it, who, you know, you, there is a lot that can go on top of that and layer that and bring it out, but what a beautiful message at its heart. And several of her colleagues referred to her as a reflective practitioner and she used those words herself. And I think that that is, that was a really lovely and authentic way to describe her. And somebody who just seeks deeper connections, deeper connections with students, with families, with her colleagues. And I just, I just appreciate it. I think she's a wonderful person and an incredibly impressive professional. And you'll probably hear this a lot tonight. I think we felt flattered that someone of her caliber applied here and was just so clearly interested in working with us. It was, I was flattered. Anybody have any other thoughts before we move on to the next candidate? No? All right, so we're going to put a pin, Dr. Kennedy, for the moment. And we are going to move on to a discussion of Mary Jane Rixson, who I'll remind the public currently is working as the interim superintendent at Granby Public Schools. And we'll reverse this. Mayor, do you mind kicking us off?
Yep, not at all. Again, the, you know, when I was looking through the resumes and listening a little bit to the interviews and reading, I was really grateful to hear such depth, knowledge and commitment to education from a woman coming from a town very similar to, you know, to ours, Granby, which kind of gets, you know, sandwiched in between larger communities, communities with more resources. And her ability to find the strengths and pull that out and also apply concepts that are very fresh and new and have that woven into her position in a community that, you know, has been there for a while. I feel like Granby has a history and a story very similar to East Hampton. Her ability to kind of pull that all together and get, you know, the, the resources she did and does to the students, to the families. And, you know, what it comes down to, the data points of her in Granby are very strong. So it was flattering that she had identified East Hampton and Public School District as a place that she would want to go to next. And I think, you know, she really pulled together in the interview and looking at some of the data from the advert post of why, how that all came together for her as an educator and how it would come all together for us as a, as a community in her students.
Thank you. Linda?
Yeah, this was our second night interview and I would say that I was very impressed with this candidate. I thought that she was really, really strong in that she spoke. She spoke not from notes, but from here. I mean, and different people have different styles. And she really had a lot to say about community. She mentioned community, I looked at my notes over the questions that we asked and she mentioned community in, I believe, every single one of her answers. She talked about being a part of these Hampton communities. She talked about going out into the community. She talked about attending different events. She wanted to be here. She wanted to be there. She wanted to be everywhere. She saw that as where she needed to be. She talked about being a mediation coordinator. I think it's really important when people have the opportunity to listen to sides. When she talked about mediation, there was something she said that when you have conflict, you need to get to the root of it because everyone has a different life experience and they, and so they come in with a different place and you need to find that place with them in order to start building the solutions. She had strong student advocacy. She talked about that they needed to be, people need to be heard, respected and then you can build rapport with them. Heard, respected, build rapport. She was very good at telling us, this, you do this, this and this and it leads to this. And it all made sense to me when she was saying these things. She said, "You reach and you find people at where they are. You, you go to where they are to find them where they are." And I really liked it when she said, she talked about data and she said, "Well, where does your, what does your data tell you? Learn from your data, but don't over-assess students. Students are more than data. They need to be assessed." But she really was looking for ways to be able to gather information that wasn't just in a test-based thing. So, you know, there were, I took a lot of good notes on that. She, very strong budgets, had worked hard on several budgets. And she, again, a very impressive candidate for superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Linda. Sam?
I really appreciated kind of seeing East Hampton through Ms. Rikman's eyes, which, this was when I, this is the second interview that we did and this was the site visit that I did as well. And this is when I started to realize, like, you know, I was on the school committee 10 years ago-ish and like, this district has changed since then. And that was when, like, it was during her interview when I realized, I'm like, oh no, like, we really have changed. It was really cool, actually. So first of all, I think she, she did the best job of explaining like what win blocks are of basically anybody I've ever heard. And that, the win is, is this period during the day called "What I Need." It kind of started just around the time of the pandemic in a lot of our schools. But the idea is that that's time for kids to get kind of extra support or enrichment or services that they need. It can, it can be very challenging to schedule, but it's also great because it does kind of reduce the pull-out times for kids with disabilities. I thought she did a really good job kind of explaining what it actually looks like to coordinate win time. And that was very helpful to me personally in terms of like thinking about it. I also really liked how she identified kind of building on our preschool as something that would be, something she'd be interested in doing. And I've always thought that building out our preschool a little bit and kind of making that a kind of a more, you know, that's, thinking about that is like the first impression that families have of our district is through preschool and kind of really giving that program the support that it deserves. So it was exciting to me to hear her talking about, about that. She pointed out that we have not, we have not had a lot of turnover in our district in terms of administrators or teachers when compared to other districts, especially during the pandemic. And I hadn't, and she talked about that as a strength of our district and I really hadn't noticed that before. So that was one of those things that she like, she kind of changed the way that I was thinking about that in, in a way that I think is really positive. And I also just, I think that she's clearly a strong leader. She's got like really firm values. She kind of has a really good understanding that not all approaches work for all teams. And I really liked kind of hearing her, kind of the way that she approaches decision-making and leading in general. And I think she would be a good, a good fit for those reasons, for sure.
Thank you, Sam. I'm gonna stand in quickly to give you the student evaluations of Ms. Rixson. Ms. Rixson was the leader on the road with a 19.25 average. Congratulations, Ms. Rixson. And some of the comments, I mean, it was close, three-way, but still, she pulled it out. Some of their comments, "Values, transparency in communication." I'm talking about "building trust" was a theme we heard a lot from her. "Values, kindness," which several of these students said. "Values, kindness, looks for kindness, cares about kindness, equity, diversity, wants everyone's voices to be heard, wants everyone to be involved in the community, looks for kindness." So those were their impressions of her. She, she appears to have had the best breakthrough by a few points with those students. Go ahead, Megan.
Another fantastic interview, another fantastic candidate. Just like we talked about before, I just was so pleased to be coming into interviews where the candidates are so prepared. Their resumes, their background materials, their application package is flawless. I mean, they just are the highest caliber. And Ms. Rixson had an excellent interview, some things that stuck out that I think make an excellent fit for our community. One is that right away, she noted that we are a community that clearly values maintaining services at minimum, but also growth. And whereas lots of districts have made other choices, this district has been really thoughtful in the past couple of years especially, but over time, that we are not cutting programs, we're not cutting arts, that we are really focused on maintaining those services and looking for how we can grow. She also had some, I thought, really helpful thoughts around budget building and relying on the community and what sort of what resources we have in the community, maybe sharing services with other districts as needed. But also coming back again and again to this idea of, you know, we had this sort of couple-year period of time where we used grants as we needed to. But grants go away. And so if we're thinking about sustainable growth in the district, we need to be thinking about something beyond just a grant. Or if we get a grant, you know, how do you build it into the budget? I really appreciated that as someone who's worked closely with our Director of Business Services. Like that is something that we can't overlook, right? It doesn't help us to just get grants and then to lose a program after we put it in. And I also noted that the focus over and over and over again on building community and building relationships, that was a strong part of her answer to a bunch of the questions, including how she deals with conflict and resolving conflict. And I wrote down and noted that resentment is toxic and that seems like such an obvious statement, but also I think very wise coming from a potential leader of a district to have an eye on sort of what are the things that can sort of percolate underneath everything and destroy a positive culture. So I was really glad to hear that. She talked about in talking with our community, really focusing on what our parents and what our families and our caregivers in the community need and want for communication. And I noted that and that really stood out to me because we've had that conversation over and over about how do people in this district want to feel engaged and how, how can we reach out to them? So I thought that was really notable. I appreciated, and this actually was true of the prior, for Dr. Kennedy as well, but a focus in special education on, you know, not just answering our questions about special education in terms of the classroom and the academic experience, but unified activities that are related to academics and not. So, you know, things like school dances or sports or whatever other activities are going on, like how, how do we incorporate everybody in a school district so that everybody is involved in a school district? I appreciated that from both of the candidates. I also was a data nerd, loved her discussion of a data team. Immediately it was like, that's, I want to be on the data team. I'm not, I'm not going to be on the data team, but. And the last thing that really stuck with me, sort of one of those eye-opening pieces, is I had not heard somebody say it this way before about technology and COVID. We did what we had to do during COVID. We shifted in, what, two weeks to everyone has a laptop and we do what we had to do, but it meant that we put the cart before the horse. And so now we are untangling, unraveling, figuring out, being planful. I was like, yeah, yeah, that's how we end up here. So I appreciate that insight.
Okay, so again, just to put out there to the public, the courage of these candidates, I know it's nothing unique when they have these interview processes, but to just understand also, when we met with these three candidates, they spent the whole day in the district, meeting with students, meeting with staff, meeting with administration. The superintendent takes them all over and then they meet with us and then they meet with the public afterwards. And it is, it's an intense experience I can imagine for them. And again, thank you to the, the search committee who helped find these three top-quality people. So for Mary Jane, I did like, one of her opening statements, she said that the number one asset in- number-one asset in a school is staff. Um, oftentimes, people will say the number-one is, is students, and that's certainly true, but I think I like the nuanced approach of saying staff because when you, when you put your staff as an important member and, and the staff knows that, then they fight harder for the kids and, and it's, it's really just, it works out. Um, she saw the positive in our, in our new building, especially our elementary and middle school, and she noted how that really makes such a smooth transition for students going from elementary to, to middle school. Um, she mentioned being solutions-based, um, but also what I thought was, it was nice was when solutions are made, the understanding that somebody's probably made more compromise than someone else. Um, so she said that it's important to follow up with those who made the largest compromise, making sure that they're still on board with the decisions that were made. Um, I like that she mentioned, you know, as the leader of the district, um, she was a, a full, uh, advocate for teaching students to self-advocate for themselves. So not just being the, the leader of a district who makes the decisions, but teaching kids how to solve problems theirself and hopefully allowing them to do that more and more, um, leading to less issues. Um, again, piggybacking on the win block, um, I liked that there was flexibility in her answer and putting it in places that benefit the most and using it as an asset, not just something that's just added to the schedule. Um, in talking about data, she mentioned, um, teaching staff how to use data. I think oftentimes, teachers are given data and it's, it's like a, a flash of here's all this information and then go back to the class and teach, and a lot of times, things fall through the cracks. So really, um, educating the staff on how to use the data properly so that it is, is more efficient. Um, and then finally, um, I appreciated her referencing, you know, Representative Gomez and, um, form, almost former Representative Carey, and realizing that you do need to seek out people in the community that can help, um, us achieve what we're looking for when oftentimes, things are tight budget-wise and, um, situations are, are challenging. So I liked that, that, that approach of understanding that we need to seek out help, not just from the community, but from those who represent our community, so.
That's great. Thank you, Mary. Ben?
Um, one of the things that I really love about this process, and I love this just in general, but I love hearing people talk about the way they envision a school district should work. Um, and it wa, I also noted that she said that the greatest asset is staff, which was a, a perspective that was different. I felt like everybody wants to say students, and it was nice to kind of hear her talk about that. At the same time, she did talk extensively about students and the importance of students. I thought it was almost just like two major components for her, um, the what, what staffs need and what ki, what kids need in, in school buildings, um, stood out to me. I, I noted too, though, I probably, this is a repetitive, but, um, she is, talked about being a solutions-based person, um, and that she's committed to an active engagement with schools daily. Like, I've sort of learned from Maureen that it's, uh, invaluable to be ever-present if you can and to really get in there, um, and to see what's going on in the halls and the classrooms, um, as much as you possibly can. Uh, she talked about the, on understanding the value of relationships between all stakeholders and, you know, continuously building connections, uh, for everybody involved in the schools and in the district. Um, I also was kind of compelled by her data discussion. She talked about, uh, let's see, I have a couple notes. She talked about how a classroom, well, data's important, but people are afraid of it, and we need to kind of humanize it and bring it into, uh, a more common understanding and things like teachers learning how to use data and actually use what the information says is very important. Um, and she, you know, she moved from like talking about data to talking about things like what goes on in classrooms and how, uh, you know, we need to be flexible about what curriculum looks like, and we can't just have, you know, kids learning from the same book all year long. We need to be fluid about how we do, um, learning in classrooms. Uh, she had what student advisory councils, which I thought was really something that is, I'm a big proponent of, bringing kids in to be part of decision-making at, um, at different levels. Um, we, digital literacy came up in a, in a productive way. She talked about, um, you can kind of bring it into each classroom. I, I was interested in the ways in which, um, I feel like a daily schedule for students is pretty packed and it's hard to introduce digital literacy. And, um, she had some good ideas about implementing it as part of daily classroom activities. Um, also very skilled with budgets. Uh, she talked about how a budget is tricky, but she loves to advocate for students, and I think connecting the decisions you make at the budget level with student lives is really important. Um, she had a, a, a good sentence which I liked, which was, when you say you're gonna do something, it has to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think a lot of, at least from the parent level, you can sometimes feel like, okay, people talk a good talk, but you don't always walk the walk, and it's nice to hear if someone commits to that. Big focus on students. She used words like restorative justice, which is a huge term and an important term, another one of these really complicated ideas, but it's really good to hear someone speak about, you know, just to say those, those words and make it seem like that might be part of their vision as well. Um, families, she mentioned, she wants them to know the door is always open, um, a real beautiful sense of like, we're in this together. Um, made me feel pretty hopeful about what she would bring to a district. Um, yet again, another fantastic candidate and, um, a real pleasure to sit and listen and learn from her.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah, every, everyone hits all the high, but you guys are too good. You leave me nothing. There's no meat on the bone. Um, I will say this, and I think I mentioned it that night, Mary Jane is incredibly skilled at not, not only, so she starts off with having this incredible knowledge of very complex things. Budgeting is one, restorative justice is another, communicate, you know, the way data should communicate with curricula, et cetera. She, so she understands all of this, as many of us do, but her incredible skill is processing all of that in her brain and communicating it in the most effective way I have ever seen a public educator do. It was incredible. Somebody should go back and watch that interview and take some clips because it was, um, she was like four TED Talks in the space of one interview on special education inclusion, on data, on budget building. Um, Mary Jane was another that I, Sam and I spent a lot of time with her at her district, and I almost had the sense like she didn't want us to go. She wanted to take us to see more, you know, there's a couple, there's a couple, she had a half-day that day, and she was almost distraught because it was like, you're not gonna be able to meet this set of kindergarteners and, oh my goodness, and, and these two or three teachers in particular do these, like, again, like, it gives me hope for the future. Um, A, that these three candidates were all attracted to our district, B, that like, no matter where these three women work, there are benefits being reaped by their incredible expertise and their commitment to public education. It makes me feel like this might all be okay. That's at the end. It, she was just, she was a pleasure to be around, a pleasure to talk to, incredibly impressive. Um, it leads to a difficult night for us. Any other thoughts someone would like to share about Mary Jane Rixson? We are gonna move on to the third and final candidate, which is Dr. Michelle Bolsh. Ben, are you ready? Do you wanna tee us off for Dr. Bolsh?
Yep. Um, so, yeah, uh, again, it felt like three superstars coming in and, and showing us what they can do. Uh, she began by telling a story that I thought was important and was mentioned by someone in, in the public speak about, um, feeling like a, a, she was in college and feeling like a kind of unseen and not that impressive, and a, an educator there kind of saw what she was capable of and helped awaken her a, a deep passion for learning. And as it turns out, that similar thing happened for me. And, uh, it was, you know, striking is this idea that, um, kids can go 12 years through public education and really just not be seen. And, uh, to start with that, it felt eye-opening for me. It was really, uh, it was exciting to, to sort of understand that there is someone who actually is thinking about students from the perspective of being seen, as simple as that. Um, she talked about identifying your why, which I thought was like a gigantic question and one that I, you could build a whole theme on or, you know, like a whole curriculum on or anything, like a, it's a district theme. Um, big emphasis on collaboration, uh, just a sense that this is a person who could juggle 42 balls at the same time and not lose one, uh, from whether it be students. She talked about wanting to really know students by name. Um, she, you know, talked about families and the importance of increasing information, making sure that all students have, all families have as much information as possible, making sure that all information goes out in as diverse a way as possible. Um, she said about the need to make sure that we're not losing kids, which seems obvious, but again, I think, like, kids do slip through the cracks in lots of ways, and there was a sense from her that that is unacceptable, and it felt like she, this is a person who will, you know, catch all the kids. Um, you, again, with data, she seemed very fluid with it, but also said that there are students behind it. Um, there are human lives behind data, and we can get caught up in percentages and numbers, but there are real people, heartbeats behind those numbers. Um, she used, the, she said she wants to see people experiencing joy, um, which, you know, I, I think it's important to have people who are very flexible and intelligent and, and brilliant in the nuances of how to run a district, but I also think like, uh, superintendent is an outward-facing position, and you, if you can instill joy in the, in, in, in education, you are doing something profound. Um, if that is something she can do, I am very interested to see that. I think that's a really important quality. Um, a cul, she talked about a culture of comfort around reaching out to families. Um, certainly we have, we have that to some extent, but I always feel like, I, it's type of people slipping through the cracks. I think families sometimes feel lost in the shuffle, and I think that the city of a culture of comfort is a fantastic concept that, uh, would greatly benefit from. Um, she was talking about, about transparency, and it felt like there, there was a real focus on opening it up, like, let's put it on the website, let's put out newsletters, let's, um, have forums, let's have public, public conversations.
Ben, tweak your mic.
Hello, hello, hello. Check, check, check.
Yes.
Um, a, a sense that she is deeply invested in.
Eric, send yours, Morgan.
Deeply invested in, um, making sure that, uh, we are loud and also compassionate and that we're making sure that all the people who are involved in our schools feel at home here. Um, and I think that was great. She talked about, uh, the power of leaning into student voice, which is something that I am a gigantic proponent of and feel like, you know, we're maybe missing something sometimes when we just think of students as just another student, like, these students have invaluable ideas, incredible perspectives on what they're experiencing in their classrooms, um, and making a point to listen to the student feels just incredibly necessary. Um, she said we have to hear from everyone, we have to increase ways to communicate. Um, she talked about kids moving fluently throughout a day, um, and I think it was in reference to special education, but also just like, sometimes kids can do different things, focus on different things that they, that they need. I think, uh, like, for instance, in the win block, which was Mary Jane Rixson's sort of specialty, but, um, I think that was an example of, of how kids can be a little bit more active and autonomous perhaps in their days. Um, let's see here, uh, data, you can use it for incremental changes, um, sweeping changes don't land well, and I, I, I tend to get real excited about the idea of sweeping changes, and it was nice to kind of be grounded a little bit in, let's, let's cool it and calm it and realize like we can get very far. She said you gotta go slow to go fast. And I think that's a, a smart and kind of wise, um, idea. Uh, when, when it came to tech, she talked about balance, um, which is exactly right. Um, things are changing so fast and are, it's almost like a, a breaking wave, and it was really useful to just think like we can, uh, she said kids need to know the parameters that basically when to use tech, um, that it's not just a fix, a fix-it sort of method. Uh, very comfortable with big budget. I felt like, uh, another public speaker mentioned like that her district kind of dwarfs ours, and it felt encouraging to, to think like these are big numbers she's working with and she's very well-versed in that. Um, she's talked about how, uh, things in the district, this, it can't just be an attitude of this is how we've alre, always done it, um, which I think is important in a future that is incredibly complicated and is changing and transforming all the time. Um, she talked about wanting to see the fruits of her labor, and that really showed in the preparation she, she came in with. We got a, we got a folder with a 30, 60, 90-day entry plan, um, and I thought that was, uh, great. It was really nice to see. Um, lots to say, and, uh, it was, the word transformative was used a few times, and I felt like, um, there was like a transformative potential in her candidacy. Um, really great to be there for that.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Eric, you ready? I can go to Megan next.
Hello.
You good? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, so this was night three of interviews. Um, so, uh, I was, uh, the opening question on each night, and my question was what are our strengths and what are challenges in our district? And what stuck out to me was, um, in Dr. Bolsh's response, kind of, she mentioned many things that she found were our strengths, but when she talked about challenges, she phrased it as opportunities, um, which I think allowed us, at least allowed me to kind of hone in more on what she was saying, and it allowed her, instead of saying challenges to opportunities, to kind of start stating things that we can improve on without looking at it as a negative, but looking at it as an area for growth. So she understood, um, from diving into our district that, um, literacy data showed that we, we need, had room to grow there. She connected it to post-COVID, which I thought was important because COVID seems like a long time ago, but the effects are very prevalent still. Um, areas we can grow, she mentioned science, especially at the middle school, which I thought kind of tuned into what I've heard from folks in the community in general before she even showed up. Um, she also mentioned leveraging teachers' strengths when talking about technology. Um, technology, I know, can be daunting, and as an educator, I see people who are all-in and all-out. Um, so she mentioned finding those people who are all-in and that's their strengths and leveraging that, make them your champions, she mentioned, um, which I think is great for supporting staff. Um, her plan for conflict was, was very proficient, it sounded. Um, she mentioned she would start with listening, with just starting with listening, creating solutions, being transparent and following through with whatever decision you make. And what I really liked was, and she, uh, connected this to her Springfield decision-making, is that when conflicts come, you remain true to your vision, you remain true to the values of your district and your goals. Um, and I thought that was important because I think that you can use that as a tool when, when, when encountering conflict is where are we trying to go and how are we gonna get there, and that kind of can draw you towards your, your solution easier. Um, I really appreciated her concrete examples when talking about listening to the community, folks in the school, out of the school. I think that's often stated, which is, is definitely necessary, but then she followed up with a couple of really solid examples. She mentioned portrait of a graduate, which I had, uh, some time to look into, and it's in Springfield, uh, quite a massive undertaking of, of getting involved in the community, going out to all stakeholders. She mentioned not just talking about people in the school, but talking to people in their faith-based communities, areas, talking to people in sporting event, like getting connected all over, all, all over the city of Springfield and trying to find out what the pulse is and using that to then create your goals and your vision. Um, and then she talked about student summits, where she created, um, in her district, student focus groups, where students would speak and administrators just sort of listened. Um, and then she even gave an example of kids kind of scratching their heads and saying, so you're gonna do these things? And her saying, yeah, this is what we're gonna do because we, we wanna do what's best for you and you know what's, you have great ideas. Um, so I thought that was really encouraging. Um, she mentioned being rich in data and poor in action, which I thought was helpful. That kind of hones back to what I mentioned with, with Mary Jane Rixson, the kind of both of them, but, um, mentioning that we have a lot of data. There's no doubt about that. I mean, almost too much data, you could argue. But kind of adding to what Ben said, she mentioned focusing on incremental changes and building careful growth, um, that's sustainable and, and lasting instead of just trying to change a lot of things. So I thought that was really important. Um, she also mentioned when you find gaps, that it usually means there's inequity somewhere, and I think that's really helpful because oftentimes when we find gaps, we look at, how can we get the kids up here when sometimes we have to say, how can we get to not down, but meet the kids where they're needed? Um, I think that, that connected with me, um, understanding that kids interact with the world in a very different way than, than we do, than we did when we were kids. Um, and then she also mentioned when talking about special ed, looking at the whole student, um, tapping into their abilities and allowing them to succeed, and, and then when they succeed, we all succeed. Um, and so those were And so those were just some of the standout points for me.
Great. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I'm going to try not to repeat too many of the things that my colleagues said. Those are things that really stuck out to me as well. My first impression, you know, looking at her resume and her materials and her application package and sort of all of the preparation is again, it's an incredibly qualified candidate. And I'll say this again at the end, but you know, arriving tonight, I both dread having to make this decision and I'm so excited and thrilled and honored and proud of this district.
Well said, Megan, well said.
So you know, I'll sort of go back to, I'll say it again. But I just, this last night of interviews, this candidate was just an unbelievable ending to that part of the process. And some things that I really wanted to highlight that stuck with me from this interview were the focus right off of that on belonging and using this word belonging over and over again throughout this sort of consistent thread throughout the interview. And we talk a lot about different ways of, you know, equity or diversity, equity, inclusion. But belonging really has this encompassing meaning where, and she described this as well. You get to show up as your whole authentic self. And just right off of that, this was, we could tell from, you know, the first five minutes, this is going to be a human-based, human-centered, relationship-based approach to all of this, everything else that's going to come after this. And I just, she told personal stories about her why and sort of what happened to her and just helping and being driven by wanting students to know that they have value and not just for their, their own selves, which of course we want them to know that for their own selves, but also that other people believe in them from an early age and every, every student having a champion. I just was so, as a parent, I want that for my child, all of them, so very, very badly. So that really stuck with me. When she was talking about all the things that sort of answered our questions over the series of seven questions, managed to hit upon everything I think that's come up either in other discussion or on one of our agendas in the past three years as things that are, you know, coming up a public speaker, that parents have written emails about middle school curriculum, curriculum in general, sciences, I mean, just all of these sort of things. Like she just had her finger on the pulse of what this community is really concerned with. And I thought that that was an excellent sign. But then again, things like the humanizing of this, she talked about our graduation rate, which, you know, is wonderful. We have, you know, 80% of students graduating and she said every single one of those number, that statistic is a person and that 12% not graduating, those are people. And she's happy with nothing less than 100%. I kind of got chills as she was talking about those statistics as people. See what else I want to not repeat too many of the things my colleague said. I really appreciated her plan for communication and engagement with families, particularly reaching out to families in the community, both when something maybe has gone off the rails a little bit and there needs, something needs to be addressed, but also to celebrate things that are going really well and to talk about how great someone's child is doing or something really amazing that happened at school. And I just, again, as a parent, if I get a phone call and it's the school and I pick it up and it's someone telling me something really great about my child, I first of all probably cry. But it just, it's this whole, you know, and then I'll, second thing is I'll cry too. It just is this whole culture of positivity and growth and just sets what's most important, I think, right in the forefront of sort of what's going on. I appreciated all of her comments about engagement, student summits, focus groups of parents, stakeholders, all of that. She talked several times about making tough decisions and keeping our values and her values at the forefront of those and doing things like taking, just complying to standards that we need and really, you know, setting that as the lowest minimum bar. So like being compliant with special ed standards is kind of, okay, yes, of course. But how do we move to an asset-based and to a support-driven model of how we think about special education, which includes some of these like fluid classrooms? And she said this about students with different abilities. She said this about diversity and belonging, just every single time we make a decision like this, everybody wins, not just the group that now is more access or something. It really makes everybody win. Okay, I'll try to wrap it up. I also, I know this is repetitive, but I just cannot emphasize enough how much it struck me to small steps. We don't need, for a whole bunch of reasons that are specific to our city and just going on in our country, we do not need destabilizing, not knowing what's happening next. Like this idea of a long-term plan and the little small steps that get us there, I just think is so good for our kids and our faculty and staff and for the families. Great answer about technology. I won't get into it for time, but yeah, I just, and I appreciated her ending with just again, that human value-based approach that her purpose in coming to this district in particular is that it feels like it was for her to be her authentic self and that she wants that for all of our students. And so fit is most important for her and I felt like the entire several week process demonstrated incredible fit.
Thank you, Megan. There'll be time to talk more later, don't worry. I'm going to briefly share these comments from our illustrious EPS students. Dr. Balch came in with an 18 average out of 20. Loves the culture of East Hampton, has great skills with understanding and perspective, a cheerleader on the sideline, empathizes with the struggles that kids experience, seems conscientious about connections with others, how she communicates for others. Every kid needs a cheerleader. They were very impressed by her talking about student summits. Yeah, put that on the horizon. Consistently checking in with students to assure they feel safe, are doing well and are loved are just some of the comments. Sam?
Yeah, I was also very impressed by Dr. Balch's interview. I found, one of the first things she said after her statement and one of the first answers to one of our questions was about how she's really invested in the pre-K to eight model. And that was the first time anybody has said that. I just think in general, in years here, I feel like when we were, when we were talking about the new school building, when we were talking about building Mountain View, we did a lot of like visioning as a community and we talked a lot about the K to eight model then. And then we always, one of my friends and I would always say, it's actually pre-K to eight, you know, because we don't want to forget about the preschool. So, and, and then since the building has been built and the school has opened and COVID happened, I really feel like COVID kind of changed a lot of the ways we talk about education generally. I feel like a lot of the discussion about the intention behind the pre-K to eight model has just kind of, it's, it's just not the most important thing anymore. I really liked the idea that that was kind of the first thing that she honed in on was the importance of that model. And she said specifically that it was important to her that kids see the same faces as they grow up. And I, I had kind of, I hate to say it, but I had kind of forgotten about that part of our vision. And so it was really nice to be reminded of that and to, to, to hear from somebody who was excited about that opportunity in particular, because like a long time ago, that was like an opportunity that I was really excited about too. And I just haven't, not to say I'm not excited, I just haven't heard about that aspect of it. So I thought that was really cool, that she kind of brought, brought that back. I really liked the example that she gave about a partnership with an organization who she felt like the, the principal had given them feedback that this organization was no longer, that partnership was no longer working in the school. And so they decided to part ways. And she said that was because the organization, the principal, the feedback from the principal was just that the organization did not align to the vision, the mission or the priorities of the school and it involved too much assessment of kids and that it was just was kind of like not, not doing what it had been doing before. And I actually feel like this is an example of something that comes up in a small community a lot, where it's like, well, we've done it like this every year. We have a partnership from this guy. He's been helping us with this forever. He does it half the price as he does in other districts. Like, you know, we have to keep this going because otherwise he's going to show up to every school committee meeting and be really annoying. And it's nice to have somebody who can just, who feels confident just saying, you know what, it's not working for us anymore. Nothing personal, we got to think about the kids. We got to go with what's going to work better for, for the kids, you know? And I think that is, that's great. It's really important to have somebody in a leadership role who feels like they can do that without feeling like they have to go in and blow everything up all the time. So I thought that was a good example for our community in particular. And I just, I, I like the way that she talked, I also highlighted the sweeping changes remark. So obviously that really speaks to us where we're at right now. When we were talking with her about AI, I had really felt like by that point in the interview, I, I think we were all really blown away. She made a very positive initial impression and what we had, what we had heard from the site visit as well and what we had heard from the search committee, like, you know, we, we understood that she was really a, a strong candidate. And so towards the end of the interview, I really wanted to just, I just wanted to like, I wanted to like push back a little bit just to kind of see, so when we were talking about AI, she's, she starts into her answer, well, I'm not afraid of AI. And I was like, well, I am, you know? And it's not really, it's not su, I mean, I'm afraid of everything a little bit. But mainly I just wanted to see like if, like what, how she would address that. And she did a really good job of like, she kind of immediately like, she paused and she laughed a little bit, like in kind of, kind of acknowledging that I kind of made a joke. And then she kind of like reoriented her answer and kind of started over again. And I really appreciated that because it's not like, it's not all about like what speaks to me personally or what speaks to anybody up here personally or any one person in the community. You need somebody who's going to be able to like really listen and hear from everybody and then, and then be able to adjust their approach in a way so that everybody feels listened to and heard. And then is also everybody's willing to try to do something a little different than maybe what they're completely comfortable with, because that's kind of what being in a community is. We all have to like do little things that make us uncomfortable because we all have to actually like keep working together. So I appreciated that, that ability of hers. And yeah, it was, it was a lovely interview. I would, I'd be very happy working with her as superintendent. And I think she said, you know, she would, would like to stay here. She's drawn to East Hampton specifically. And that was when I, that another moment when I was like, wow, like people really want to come here and work here. And that was just like so exciting to me. So great, great experience all around.
Thank you, Sam. Linda?
So I'm going to just start where Sam ended with, Dr. Balch told us that we were the first interview that she has ever had outside of her district. First time she wanted to go outside of her district. That was a wow moment for me. When I thought, she is, she also, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of this, when she came to the table to greet each one of us, we were handed a packet with a thorough 30, 60 and 90 day implementation plan. She had done her homework. She knew what she wanted to do and she's ready to hit the ground running. She's ready to walk into the building and do the job. I found that very impressive. I also, I am a very people-based, authentic person. She is a very people-based, authentic person with a lot of real world experiences. Every, my only follow-ups in the other two interviews were running real world examples. I sat here and I am a new school committee member and I heard a lot of jargon the first couple or three months that I was literally going and Googling it and trying to figure it out. And I think in any field, when you're in that field for a long time, you speak and you kind of speak in a way that other people kind of can't quite grasp it. With Dr. Balch, she, I did not need to do a follow-up question because in every question she answered from a very professional and then she went into her personal. So it was like, this is what I believe and this is why I believe it. This is what I do and this is why I did it. Every single solitary question that she was asked, she had those. I had no need to say, well, tell me more about that, because she had already told me more about that. I'm just, again, all of my other colleagues in here, I, it's been a long night for all of you that are here, but I, the passion and the joy. I believe that public education is one of the most important things we have in our society. I believe that we need to have a student-centered education and I believe that we need to bring passion and joy into the lives of our teachers and our students and everybody's working in our community. She also, Portrait of a Graduate, all of these programs that she's worked with are very based in go out, we are a community, we are a community, we're a community. We're not just walls that they walk in and out of. We are a community. Her solutions are very based in being community-based solutions and all of us working together. And the other thing that I wanted to mention here was that she has such a strong commitment to training and coaching staff and colleagues. I was very impressed that, with her taking paraprofessionals, become educators, become a full-fledged, move on. You're, you're here in the school system, you want this, I will help you. I will help you find the ways to get there. She spoke very eloquently to her belief in that, but also gave us real examples of how she had done that. She was an extremely impressive candidate and it was a pleasure to meet all of the candidates. They are all strong. Dr. Balch really spoke to me.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor, would you like to share your thoughts on Dr. Balch?
Yeah, I mean, the, to, I think that the thing that brought Dr. Balch kind of in front of my mind was just some work we've been doing in the city and not doing a great job at some of it, others. This whole concept of DBI and what that means, what that doesn't mean, what does it mean when your, your city is 90% white? And in her materials, in the conversation, the one thing that came up over and over again, that I have heard as a key success kind of pivot in, in this kind of work is a sense of belonging. And she really went, she wove, she zoomed in, she went zoomed out, but she talked about her job really is to figure out what is going to make every student and staff person, a member of our community, feel like they belong. And the tools she has in those toolbox to do that is, it's impressive. And the fact that she had been doing it for so long in Springfield is more than impressive. It's the third largest school district and I thought that was. So the fact that she could be in that kind of environment for so long and to be zooming into, you know, whatever program that she was presenting. But it all came down, when I read it, to this idea of belonging, like how or where she was going to find a way, work with people to make sure everyone had a space or a place where they felt they could belong, that they felt safe. And I, I think that that's something every district and community and whatnot needs. But I think that the way she expressed it and what she's actually done and how she understands East Hampton, it really checked a lot of boxes to me. And she was very authentic in, in the presentation and the, of what she would do and how she would do it. I don't know, 30, 90, 60 day plans, like number one reason why I last as a teacher less than first. I mean, I, that blew me away too. I was like, wow. Yeah, but belonging really kind of, she just, just a wonderful job with that.
Thank you. Okay. Again, y'all haven't left much meat on the bone, but I'm going to, I want to tell, my, my portion is going to be to tell a little story about how the vibe of this whole thing shook out for me. This was a journey. Come along with me on this journey. We've spoken about how all of these three candidates, very impressive. So this all starts on paper, right? You read their resumes, you start to call their references and something starts to happen for me. First of all, Dr. Balch's references are numerous and good luck, once you get these folks on the phone and they understand that they're being asked to talk about Michelle. Good luck getting off the phone with these individuals because they have a lot to say. And these common themes of what they would say about her started to emerge. Hardest worker I've ever met, one of the most brilliant people I've ever known, incred, you know, so. know, so, so caring, so thoughtful. And at this point, I had yet to see this woman in real life, so shh, it was, it was weird. It was weird. Very impressive. We went to the site visit. There are people coming from all over the state to talk about this woman. Again, the same themes emerged. Incredibly smart, has this brilliant ingenuity, so dedicated. And what kept living in the back of my brain is if I am this gal, why East Hampton? And it sat there as the weeks unfolded. And then we go to the interviews and Cindy and Mary Jane were nights one and two. Wow, right? Like every, every time, they just upped the bar, upped the bar. And then we roll into night three, I have yet to see Dr. Bosch in the flesh. And I'm going to tell you, there was a vibe in the room that night that started kind of small. She walked down the table, she gave us each a folder. I opened the maroon folder, our school color, and there is printed on cardstock, a 30, 60, 90 day entry plan. Okay. So I was like, this can't be real life. She began to talk and this electric buzz starts in the room. And I was watching my members as she was speaking. And I took a lot of notes on Dr. Bosch and not as many as the first two because a lot of what I was seeing was reflected in the faces of my members. Like, we found it. I think it's here. Like, and I, I still in the back of my head was like, but why East Hampton? Right? And so we asked her at the end, why East Hampton? And that was the moment where it gelled for me, where it was like, I think the universe has owed East Hampton a favor for a minute and she's come to town to pay it up. Dr. Bosch talked about how she had built her skillset in this incredibly demanding district, the third largest in the Commonwealth, as the mayor mentioned. And that what was really missing for her at this point in her career was that reconnection back to every single student, every single parent, every single teacher. I just gave myself chills. That is possible in a district of our size. And I thought, yeah, good answer. Good answer. I'm a fan of Dr. Bosch. I'm a fan of all three of these women. I'm incre-, I, I feel so much gratitude and very flattered and grateful for their time and their interest. And, and I think Dr. Bosch struck me as being spectacularly special and a, and a really interesting fit for this district and where we are and where we all talk about where we want to go. I would like to take our next phase as maybe a show of hands to say, if the question is asked of you, do you have a clear frontrunner in your mind, yes or no? If you raise your hand, that is a yes. Just to gauge for how we should handle this next portion of the meeting. And so if the question is posed to you, do you have a clear frontrunner in your mind, yes or no? Please raise your hand. Okay. So that's going to move us to a straw poll. So I'm going to, going to reverse the order. We're going to start with Dr. Bosch. If Dr. Bosch is your frontrunner, please raise your hand. Well, that is interesting. So I guess what the public might want to know, they heard me with my big feelings. Ben, would you like to start and just kind of explain and then maybe we can talk about emotion for a vote?
Explain my, my, you know, your big feelings.
No, we heard about my big feelings. He has normal feelings. He's fine.
I enjoyed the journey that we went on. I think, I guess, I think I said most of what struck me about Dr. Bosch. There was a feeling that this is a person who is brilliant and can kind of do everything that the, that's required of a very, very challenging job. But the why East Hampton question was in my mind too. Throughout, like there was a point where I thought, what is going on here? This person is very, very professional and skilled. Like, this is a little town, like it just seemed like a, an interesting combination. And I was grateful for the question because the things she said struck me as like a new challenge, like a, a fresh challenge. She said she wanted to be in a place where everyone knows her. I imagine that the other two candidates also feel that way, but this was a person who, who seemed truly dedicated to a deep connection, building connections with people. She wants to be her authentic self, she can be herself. This thing about her never having interviewed before, I thought was also really important to consider because I know that there are many superintendent jobs. I think every year, there's a lot of opportunities for people and to have been in one place for a long time says a lot about who she is. She said she wanted to engage in work that, it fulfills her, that brings her joy, that, and that she takes her commitment seriously. She said she feels like she can spend a long time here. Turnover is incredible when they're in this job and I, I would love a deep commitment. I felt convinced by what she had to say about that. She wants to bring skills, her gifts and talents to this district and those gifts and talents felt profound and abundant. And her, she felt like her values aligned with this district's values. There's just a lot of reasons why it felt like this is a really good fit. Again, I think it's not easy to talk all the time, especially in this, in this, in this interview, as you guys have talked about, it's like very hard to do this, to get prepared for this. And I, I feel great admiration and respect for the people who have put in the work to get, to get here. But it felt like this is somebody who can really transform our district and can help us meet the dizzying challenges that we are going to be faced with perhaps in the coming year. You know, it's not, we don't know what, what's coming. And I think it's someone like Dr. Michelle Bosch would be an enormous resource. And there's been a lot of positive energy from pretty much everyone and I'm, I'm just in line with that. So I'm excited about the possibility.
Eric?
So my adequate or big feelings, I think, I think they, they don't take away from what, what Dr. Kennedy and Ms. Rixson brought. It's not, it's not that they didn't have something, it's that I saw something that Dr. Bosch had. You talk about belonging, you talk about wanting to see the fruits of her labor. She has what seems to be honing her skills in this massive district and now wants to take those skills and, and apply it to a location where she can say, I can see. And she gave examples when we asked why East Hampton and she said, she said Springfield is massive and she has been in buildings where she authentically, genuinely wished she could say some child's name in the hallway when they're walking by, I wish I could say your, but I don't know your name. So I felt that when she said it. And then what made it come even more real was, which is wild that someone sent that email, because someone sent in an email talking about standing in the circle. I was in that circle too. So I don't know who else was in that circle, but after our, after our interview, we were walking around, I had gotten a cup of coffee to make it to the end. And I just walked over to where Dr. Bosch was and there were several other people were standing. I was just listening, they were having a conversation. So in walks a parent with a student, then the student very confidently just started talking about ST math. And it was a sixth grade student and almost just watching, just, she stepped through the circle to the side of him, forcing him to turn his body away from us and towards her. And then I just left and I went over and I just realized I'm, I'm not a part of this conversation, but she's made this student know. I could just picture a lot of people, and I myself might even, just entertaining that child's question, listening and just giving a response, but maintaining your connection to this adult circle. But just the way that she moved herself out of that, it just sent this message that was so genuine that I'm here to listen to you now. What, what did you want to ask about? And let me give you an answer that's not for the circle either. This answer is for you because you're asking and it's about your sixth grade experience. So I thought that was really profound. And then also just that energy that people are talking about, you felt it in that room, but you also saw it. I felt like it's a challenge to ask families, community members to come to the high school during the week, at a weeknight at seven o'clock for a meet and greet. But you saw people showing up on that third night and it just made me stand there and go, she's already bringing people together and she, we're just doing the interview. And also just the notion that these people want to be around her. So that speaks volumes of what she brings without even maybe even, even thinking about it. It's just her natural, just way about her that really drew me to, just watching the room and just experiencing, okay, so this, this is something that on paper, they all three are fantastic experiences, but then when you take the paper away and you just look around your surroundings, that was, there was a major difference that I noticed with Dr. Bosch that was profound and I think really meaningful that could, what made me have those feelings. Yeah. I'll leave it at that.
Megan?
I've got big feelings. I've got big feelings. That's, will shock you.
We're going to get bumper stickers.
Okay, so if I'm, I've already said so much about this individual. So I just want to focus on a couple of like last sort of lingering thoughts I have in my mind that sort of set, that had me raising my hand in a straw poll without any doubt. First of all, the overwhelming community support. We have unanimous input from community members, including students, that this person is a good fit for our district. And I don't, I don't take that lightly. I think that's important. The qual-, as we've said all night, the quality of these three candidates, they are all outstanding. I am incredibly proud. I feel privileged and honored, but also have a deep pride that these are the folks who want to apply to be a superintendent of our district. I have always thought that our district is fantastic. And, you know, this is, and our city is fantastic and clearly other people think that as well. Ten applicants, who knows how many of them were all-stars, but we get three all-stars delivered to us. Now we have this night where we have, I think, said before, I both dread making this decision, but also I am so proud, so grateful, so excited for what I think our next decade plus could look like here. I'm just so hopeful and that is a really great feeling to have at the end of an interview. So sort of the last thing I'll, I'll leave with is that I think it was clear that this candidate fits with our values as a district. All of the candidates did, including this, this candidate. But as this candidate was talking, I, over and over again, thought that this is the school, this is the environment that I want my kids in. And I felt multiple times during the conversation that if this environment is really, you know, if, if we can bring this here and have everybody, kids, staff, faculty feeling like they belong, I think we'll be okay. And I, that like little kernel of I think we might be okay is a great feeling to have in this climate. And that is the first time that I have so wholeheartedly felt that way as a school committee member about, you know, what the next like couple of decades look like for our district. I just, I can't say enough.
Thank you.
But I will stop. I will say enough. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I am also very excited. I also have that same feeling of like, I think we're going to be all right, which is, you know, exactly, like you never know. But I think, I, I think of myself as like kind of an eternal pessimist. And so it's, it's a nice like, it's a nice feeling to have to just kind of know that we're headed into good hands. And I, I look forward to working together with Dr. Bosch. And I do, I do also really appreciate all of the community input. We did get, like, it's rare that we get unanimous opinions about anything. And so I think that that really says something. I'm, I'm really excited by how involved the community has been in this search in a way that I think has been really positive and really kind of like strengths oriented as well. I really feel like we've been working together. It's been a real honor to be involved in that. And it's, it's, it's nice to kind of, I get to know us all better through this whole process as well.
Well said. You got two well-said tonight. It's like a Paul Hollywood handshake.
There you go. Exactly.
Linda?
I can remember this for the rest of my life.
I think that, I think educators are called. I think, I think it's one of those professions that either you're one or you're not. Michelle told us in her first sentences, why? Because she had experienced the transformative power of having a teacher believe in her. That life-changing experience was clear to me that that is what she wants to share with every single human she comes across. That's just what she wants to do. That's just who she is and that's what she wants to do. And so for me, she knows where she belongs. And I think that for whatever reason, and may, some of them may be because we as East Hampton Public Schools have gone through what we've gone through in the past little time, she decided she wanted to come here, that this is where she belongs. And I'm going to believe her. And that's, I'm going to say, I'm going to say a lot more, but I'll stop.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor?
I honestly can't get over the statement from our chair, I think the universe owes Hampton a minute. And maybe that's the case. I think, I think that's true with, with all three candidates, the finalists, really strong. And the, the vibe part that other members have spoken about is not something that I experienced, but the consistency of what she has put forward in her career, the fact that the Springfield School Committee selected her to step up in the middle of a mess to kind of hold it all down speaks volumes. And I do, I agree with my, my adjacent seatmate here that she saw a place in East Hampton that she felt she could belong and, and make those choices and, and reach into her many talents and dedication as an educator and pull it together in a different way.
Maureen, I'm curious if you have anything you want to share.
Well, I want to share that I just think East Hampton is, is a fantastic district that I have, you know, thank you very much for my opportunity to be here. I thoroughly enjoyed the students here and the staff. And I think, you know, if I had had a choice, that she would have been my choice also just because of her dedication to students. That sense of belonging is so important that a superintendent lets everyone know that they, they do belong, that we need to, we sometimes have to make some decisions that people may not like, but it's how you make that decision, how you relate it to people, that you still respect them as a person, but some difficult decisions have to be made. You know, coming from the second largest school district, and that's what she said. I think that was a question about, about me too, coming here. Like, how can someone from, you know, a large district be effective in a small district? But when you come from a large district, you have so many different experiences because every day there is something going on that needs your intervention. And if you can bring those skills to a small district, it's advantageous. I, I do think that you've all made a great choice. I think the other two were great candidates. I enjoyed talking to them, taking them through. I also recognize that they're very skilled leaders also. And I hope that they do find, you know, another district where, that also recognizes that as they continue their search. But I, I do agree with your decision from Michelle. And I want to thank you all.
We can't, I can't, no, no.
You're going to get lured aside. You're still working.
Nope, I'm not doing it.
For a while.
Well, thank you for, for your time.
Yeah, we did. You can become the superintendent, yes.
So I can just add one quick little thing in.
Yes, Megan, go.
Interim Superintendent Beninda did not need to spend the amount of time that she spent with these candidates and in this process. And we are grateful. And it is all part And it is all part of, as many people talked about, this whole process, beginning to end, is just...
That's my next point.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yes.
And then you have the search committee.
So I'm about to call for, no, no, no. Megan, it's a beautiful segue. We're gonna call for a motion for this official vote in a minute, but I want to take a minute because this, um, it takes a village for sure. We have been through it, as some have alluded to. And this school committee made a conscious effort that we're not just gonna do this better, we're gonna do this perfect. And we have worked
Gotten, gotten close.
For a long time, um, to get as close to perfection as possible because we felt that's what this district deserved. And that this district has had some hard knocks that it didn't deserve and we were gonna, we were gonna set that record straight as much as was within our power to do so. So these members, you've heard them tonight. These are incredibly articulate, thoughtful, dedicated people that the city should have a higher level of gratitude for, um, because they're really incredible and they make this work very easy. This is a mayor who has been staunchly in support of public education with whom we could not do this work because we couldn't pay the bills. And Maureen Beninda is an inspiration that paved the way for this. So talk about transformative, those were the first bricks. And there, you know, there's a place in that legacy. Our search committee, people from, who did not know each other before they met, and we heard reports from M A S C about, they were so thoughtful and kind and took so seriously the tasks we had asked of them. And I was a little surprised with some of those results. And it was, we gave it to the universe, we trusted you, and look how this unfolded. Well done and thank you. Um, yeah. I, can we, little, yeah. Um, yeah. And then, and Liz Levant, who is our North Star. And just so smart and kind and patient. Really incredible. I have prepared the legal language
Oh, good.
for a motion. I'm gonna write a name on here that I could not write before now. Who would like to read this motion?
I would love to read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you are. That's so we don't get it wrong for legal reasons, y'all. Go ahead.
Um, I, it is my great honor to make a motion to offer the position of superintendent of East Hampton Public Schools to Dr. Michelle Bolsh pending successful contract negotiations.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I heard three voices. Sue, who did you pick?
I didn't, I can't. I think I've heard her.
Ben, 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 full circle. I like that. Yes. Yes. Ben's second. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Aye, 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 aye. All those opposed, abstentions, motion passes unanimously. So to the public. Okay, you want to, go ahead. It's been a long road. So to the public, here's what happens now. Uh, we are going to adjourn into an executive session. We are going to make phone calls to all three of these candidates, um, for whom we have a lot of gratitude. We are probably going to have an initial conversation briefly about a contract. And then we are going to adjourn from that executive session. So you will not be hearing anything more of us tonight. However, myself and Maureen and probably Liz will work on a press release tomorrow to keep everybody updated. And can I get a motion to move into?
Can I just ask?
Yes, yes, Sam, go.
So we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. You're anticipating?
That is still tentative because of the contract negotiations. There will not be a public-facing portion of the meeting tomorrow night, but we may reserve that space.
Okay, so we'll keep that in the calendar, but we may end up not needing.
Correct. For our member, well, I'll tell you, it's downstairs tomorrow. We'll deal with that later. Okay, uh, motion to, uh, where's my language? Okay, so pursuant to Mass General Law C three zero A S twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent. We are going to move into executive session. We roll call out, Sue?
Just roll call.
Just roll call in.
All right.
Good night, East Hampton.
Good night.
Oh, thanks, Matias.
Matias.
Matias. You got it, buddy. You got it.
I can work. Can you tell mama home wide?
Good night, East Hampton.
Me and Tim is rolling, yeah. That was fantastic.
It's Mike's fault.